Okay, we'll begin the call to order. The Tuesday, September the 18th, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. And we'll start with roll call. Mrs. Mimi.
Present.
Mrs. Towns.
Present.
Mr. Kilman.
Present.
And Mr. Gay. And that's all we appear to have tonight. Okay, and we'll start with the approval of minutes. Mrs. Towns has brought up a subject on the minutes that we need to take a look at, on our election of officers. She didn't quite like the wording, and so Crystal's been nice enough to give us a correction. And I'd like for you to take a look at the two. And I'd like to get a recommendation on whether to adopt the new minutes. Ms. Towns?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as edited by Crystal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, right hand? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, and do we have a motion that we accept the minutes as them being corrected?
Yes.
My second.
Well, they said before we have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the minutes are unanimous, edited, and accepted. Okay, and the first is our number four are public items, and I'll turn it over to Ms. C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. The request is for Radiator Road property. The request is to amend Chapter 530 of the UDO in order to permit additional uses that would either be permitted by right or with a special use permit. The requested uses are permitted in the Light Industrial District, but they are not currently permitted within the village overlay. The intent behind this request is to expand allowed uses in order to attract tenants. I've provided a few screenshots, actually, of the property to give you a sense of the property in the area in question. So this is, again, the Radiator Specialty property. This shows, the circled area, of course, is the actual developed parcel. Over here is the vacant parcel that's also owned by Radiator Specialty, but again, it's vacant. This is the CSX Railroad Line, and here is Old Monroe Road. Here's a Google Street View. Fancy for you, but it's looking down Radiator Road, and you can see some of the existing facilities on the property. And also kind of a bird's eye view, if you will, to show you this property, this building, as well as this one, and where and how they currently have trucks used or did for the property. So again, the request is to permit additional uses. If you look at page one of your staff report, you can see the table of uses. This is, like I say, these uses are permitted in the Light Industrial District, but they are not within the village overlay. So you can see, if you look at the table, the use is listed on the left side. Again, that's what you would see if you look in Light Industrial District, which is found, starting in your staff report on page 520. And again, these are pulled out. So uses on the left are the ones they want to request as a part of this amendment. The middle column shows whether they would be permitted by right, which is represented with a P, or if they would require a special use permit, which is represented with an S. On the right-hand side shows notes. Those are just pulled and copied from the table that you see from our UDO that, again, starts on page 520. So the requested uses are green, commercial greenhouse or nursery, construction storage yard, commercial laundry services, vehicle sales, storage and service, RV or boat storage, vehicle storage and towing, general industrial warehousing, wholesaling and freight movement, as well as recycling facilities indoors. Again, the intent behind this is the applicant believes this will help make the property more marketable and attract additional tenants. If you think back, you'll remember that Radiator Specialty requested that this property be rezoned from Regional Business District. I'm getting ahead of myself. Be rezoned from Regional Business District to Light Industrial, and that was approved by Town Council ultimately in June of this year. To give you, again, a snapshot of where we are with consistency, this property is located in both the Sun Valley Village and also the US 74 East Corridor. So here's a screenshot showing you the future land use map for Sun Valley Village. Again, this is circled here. This shows the Radiator Specialty property in its industrial zoning. Again, this is Old Monroe Road. This is US 74 Corridor and in what we call east in that village. And down here, you can see, again, the CSX Railroad Line. Here's 74. The circled property represents the vacant piece, and then it's right beside the Harris Teeter Distribution Center. Zoning map shows, again, how it is currently zoned, which is Light Industrial. Purple represents Light Industrial, and the blue represents Regional Business District. Just did want to mention that when the village was expanded back in 2016, this was expanded in a conservative way. So that's why some of these uses were not included. Because, again, if you look at kind of the residential neighborhood, the character with Brandon Oaks and the thing, the character with Brandon Oaks and the residential, more rural, I say rural, neighborhood, that was why, again, this was more conservative in its approach. So that's why the applicant is requesting what seems like so many uses. Again, not all of them are by right. Some of them would require an applicant to go and request a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. And because these uses are requested doesn't mean that all or, you know, many or any of these will be requested, but the applicant does want to have the options available. So at this point, I would like to read the required consistency findings into the record. I do want to let you know that the applicant is here. I believe they have some slides they're happy to show you and answer any questions if you have them. So, the proposed, yeah. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Land use and housing goal number one. The proposed UDO text amendment will avoid potential land use conflicts between neighboring properties because the previously existing manufacturing use is compatible with the proposed future land use and nearby industrial and commercial uses. The amendment will also allow for the desired mix of uses within villages. Economic development goal number one. Amending the Light Industrial Village Overlay District allowed uses will not only allow for the continued use of the property as a manufacturing facility, but also allow for the expansion of uses on the property, thereby diversifying the local economy and providing more varied employment opportunities. This UDO ordinance amendment is in the best interest of the public because it provides goods to the community yet minimizes land use conflicts. Staff does recommend approval of this request. Again, at this time, I would certainly defer to the applicant if you have any questions of them before we hold the public meeting. Thank you.
Couple of things I'd like to, was remiss again, in welcoming Mike Ed, our Town Council member here tonight, and Patrick, our Town Manager. And thank you for attending. And a little bit of history for the applicant, which some of the folks here know. That was my grandfather's property years ago, and it was called Red Hill. And that whole area back there. And in fact, there was a little church on Monroe Road named Red Hill Baptist Church because that section was called Red Hill. And they had killer wild strawberries back there near the railroad track, and I picked them as a kid. So still mad at my grandfather for selling that property, Radiator Specialty. So I'd like to open it up for any questions to the applicant. Go ahead, Ms. Towns.
With regard to the car storage, vehicle storage, how many cars do you, vehicles do you think you will be storing? And will you consider, or at some point, possibly putting in vertical floors for parking?
Well, I guess at this point, maybe if you could tell us exactly what you have planned for, because I know there are a lot of uses. I mean, I don't know, will you be putting cars there? That's right, okay. Okay. Is there any here in the community that wants to make any comments or ask any questions?
No, Chair, there's no public comments at this moment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, if you'd maybe give us an idea of what you plan to do.
Be happy to. First, let me introduce myself and my associate to you. We're, my name is Patrick Pierce with Sell &amp; Property Group. This is John Phillips. We are under contract to purchase the Radiator Specialty building. The closing won't happen for a few months as we work through some of the details of that. And Radiator Specialty is also, they are, we're purchasing the property. Radiator Specialty is staying there. They are downsizing, but they still plan to have a significant presence there. So they are not leaving Union County. And they also have supported just, it's a 10-year package, I think, as well, but they support what we're trying to do here. Our thoughts really are, we are real estate. We purchase and develop commercial real estate, industrial, retail, office, and multifamily. And so whenever we purchase this property from Radiator Specialty, they're going to occupy a part of the property, but a lot of the part, a lot, the rest of the property is going to be vacant. And what we'll try and do is we'll try to find tenants that'll lease that property from us. And as I've told other folks, I wish I had a great crystal ball I could tell you who is going to show up for that, but we just don't know that. And we felt that these uses would be helpful to have the ability to use, have these uses on that property so that as tenants come to us, we can see if they are, if they fit. And some of the uses to us are a little more important than others, but this is the list we'd like to have. And we know that there are certainly other requirements that go along with that, with the special use permits, that some of these requirements have. And we're certainly okay with that. But we just wanted to have a little more flexibility with that particular property.
So at this time, you only have one tenant, and you'll be looking for potential tenants with very different business models or whatever?
Potentially, yes.
Gotcha, okay. Any other questions?
Will you be targeting specific businesses? Or is just like whatever, whoever's interested? Like, will you be targeting, I guess I might make it more specific. Will you be targeting, like, instead of like, some, like, the one that's over here in Sun Valley where the supermarkets are, they have like certain businesses that they seem to target, like nail salons, like, you know, stuff that people go in. Will you be targeting a different type, like a more industry type of businesses? Or you're?
Well, it really is, it lends itself to an industrial type, what we call industrial type use. That would be, it'd likely be a manufacturer or distributor, someone like that, as opposed to a more retailer or commercial use. It really probably would not lend itself to that.
Right.
So your target is basically industry, like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you've got the big bay doors that tractor trailers back up to unload and unload and that sort of thing. So distribution and light manufacturing is what your key?
Radiator Specialty is down, you know, they, as you probably know, they've manufactured there for many, many years. And so they, some of the infrastructure that's there, the heavy electrical, the dock doors for distribution would lend itself to variety uses, including manufacturing. So, I mean, it's very possible that we could see some of that.
So they got 440 three-phase power or two, was it 240 or?
They've got, they've got three-phase power, and they've got, I mean, we counted, I mean, at least 3,000 amps there. I mean, it was just, you know, 480. So, I mean, it's, it's, there's probably more than that there. That's just sort of what we saw in one panel. But they've built it over the years, and so, again, that kind of lends itself. Y'all probably haven't seen the inside of the buildings, but they're already existing demising walls, so it would be pretty easy for us to say, lease 30,000 square feet to a manufacturer, 18,000 square feet to a distributor. I mean, it just, and that's our intention.
And you have rail siding coming in?
We've got a rail spur that's active, that works. And so we're excited about that, too, because that really adds another level there of attractiveness to industry.
Other questions?
That was my question, you know, will you be able, will?
My question, my next question was, will you be able to utilize the railroad? You know, if businesses come in and they need to ship their products out?
You know, there are a lot of businesses that use rail, a lot that don't. But we love having that rail spur there.
Yes.
Yeah.
It gives us a lot of flexibility.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and I think you'll do well by having it there.
Absolutely.
It's pretty rare to have that.
And it's fairly expensive to keep it, isn't it? Don't you have to pay the railroad a certain amount of money a year to have it?
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
Can you talk to the, I guess, the recycling facilities? I don't, is there an example that we have in town of a indoor recycling facility? Something comparable, or I guess, because I saw that was mentioned in, I guess, your write-up in that industry specifically. Is there maybe an example, you know, within a neighboring town?
Well, there are some in Charlotte, and it's all enclosed. So they, you know, they bring materials into the building, and then they basically separate it in the building itself. I've asked, we have not, have you ever leased anything to a? I haven't either, so I don't have any direct experience with that.
And I guess the follow-up to that would then be, is there anything from a, is it just raw material, plastic, you know, metals? Or is there hazardous, you know, fuel, oil, potentially hazardous substances that would then, would it be more appropriate to have a special use permit for that? Or is it just, would that indoor recycling cover everything?
Yeah, I think we didn't?
From our standpoint, we certainly would not want to have someone having anything hazardous inside there. So that would be part of our lease agreement.
Aren't you removing the chemical tanks that are there now?
Yes, they're to be removed by Radiator Specialty before we purchase the property.
Right, and I'm sure if you're doing phase one, and if, probably you're going to have to do a phase two if they had chemical tanks.
We actually are going to apply for a Brownsville permit, and we're in that process right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's see, do I have a motion? Do we go for a motion now, correct?
Do you have any questions of staff?
Excuse me?
Do you have any questions of staff?
Any questions of staff?
No, I don't.
If I can ask, it seemed as though that, when I asked my question, they were kind of looking, like researching it almost to kind of clarify on the recycling piece.
Okay.
Is that, any clarification on that?
I think that's what Rox is looking at right now.
Yeah, the ordinance isn't specific in terms of the type of materials that are listed. I'm looking at the definition section to see, you know, what I'm looking at. And so it's not necessarily specific in terms of the specific material that is recycled. However, when you look at some of the processes, they are conducive to what Patrick had mentioned in their brief description of the use, that you have a warehouse-style, you know, type building, big wide-open space, concrete slab floor. Trucks come in, dump the material. It's sorted and processed using whatever technology that the user is using. You know, it may be skid steer or something to that effect. And then it's packed, and then it's cleaned, bundled. I'm reading the definition. Cleaned, bundled, compacted into, in essence, little, you know, units, if you will. So the domestic household recycling waste that we all, not waste, but material that we all produce, and goes on to places that we have no idea where. But, yeah, so it's not specific in terms of the material, but when I read the processes, it seems like that's what it's directing towards, is that domestic recycling operation versus, I don't know, chemical oil, you know, I don't know, recycling facility that may have its own separate kind of distinguishment.
Rox, can I ask a question? Do, will the town, like, since he's there, looking to do like a manufacturing, you know, hat, opening up to manufacturing? Would, will, is there anything under, like, shelter workshops for individuals with disabilities under the, I mean, under the, like, I guess, the ordinance as far as like what type of businesses can come in? I was just curious, like shelter, like UDI is a shelter workshop in Monroe. It's like unified diversity, I forgot what the O is. But it's like a shelter workshop, shelter workshop for individuals with special needs? And I was just curious, because I was going to ask them if they would be, if someone were to come to open up a shelter workshop, would that be considered? I mean, I don't know if that's something in our?
I think I know what you're talking about. I know I've certainly worked with, had experience with that in a previous life. I, our, I don't think our ordinance specifically addresses that to accomplish what you're saying. But as you know, this is a good opportunity to make sure we capture that in the update of the UDO. Yes, ma'am. So, but as far as, you know, what their intentions are, that hasn't been a discussion. But I like to think that that's something that we would all work to accommodate, you know, as long as it falls in the parameters of everything. And that may be something that, like I say, we just need to dive a little bit deeper in. That's my thought with, like I say, this update that's going on right now. So, let's chat offline.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm special ed teacher. So that's why I was just curious, because, you know, I mean, we, I guess we can research it, but like, that would be great if they, since you guys are into manufacturing, if somebody would be open to having a shelter workshop on that property. You know, like it's, it will be open for like individual with special needs who can not normally work in a regular employment, but more putting like small pieces together that will actually in turn help out bigger companies. So, it was just a question that I had. I'm very passionate about special ed.
Go hand-in-hand with that.
Yeah, it may be more of a business model, more than a land use, but let's definitely chat offline. I'd like to learn more about what you're thinking. Thank you.
I'm sure the business, the codes for the county is going to make sure the disability, American Disability Act is in effect.
Absolutely.
Any other questions of staff? Questions of the applicant? All finished with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the application, including the consistent C findings as, excuse me, as read by staff. I would like to make a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Okay. You'd like to make a motion to approve ZT 2018-0076, Radiator Road. Do we have a, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. So then please give Samantha a pat on the back. I don't know, she got all choked up.
Yes.
It's an important project. It's very important.
Thank you very much, and good luck with your project and new tenants.
Yes, good luck.
Thanks for doing business at Union Trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take good care of Red Hill.
Thank you very much.
That's right. Okay, other business.
All right, I'll keep this one quick. Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan Update. So you all were kind enough to make a recommendation onto Town Council. So the public hearing is scheduled for this coming Tuesday, a week from today, before Town Council, so that is September 25th. Mark your calendars. Again, that'll be before Town Council. And it's also scheduled to go before the Union County Board of County Commissioners on October 1st. That's all I have. Do you have any questions of me?
Don't think so.
Thank you.
Now to the new UDO.
All right. Good evening, Planning Board members. I want to go ahead and have a follow-up to the conversation we had at the last meeting regarding the update to the Unified Development Ordinance and Land Development Regulations Manual. And so at the last, at the last meeting, I wanted to kind of catch you up, and this is more of a catch-up for, not necessarily a catch-up for Ms. Towns, who's a committee member, but I wanted to catch up the folks on the Planning Board regarding the progress we've made on the UDO update, and also kind of identify for you some specific elements that we were, you know, going to be proposing for changes. And these are items that'll eventually find their way to your desk when we bring forth the document for adoption, and ultimately, you know, council will be asked to approve them. So we spent roughly, I think, an hour at the last meeting, and it was a good, you know, kind of a charge at the UDO. I think we got through two-thirds of the content, and this is sort of like that last third that we didn't get to at the last meeting. And Ms. Towns was kind enough to remind me that there was thunder and lightning and all kinds of storms while I was doing my presentation. So I don't have those kind of theatrics going on in the background tonight, but for timing purposes, we're going to try to keep this just about 15 or 20 minutes, absent any discussion or dialogue from the Planning Board, so we'll keep it relatively abbreviated. So the next chapter I want to talk to you about, and we're going to cover this just kind of in summary form, is an update to our subdivision standards. These are the base standards that the Planning or Engineering Department use to determine, you know, how things like roads are laid out or how lots should be platted, and how open space should be provided, and sidewalks and street infrastructure and things like that. So just to give you the background of what this chapter, how it serves us. As you would expect, there's just a lot of, there's going to be a lot of household, housekeeping amendments to it, little nitpicky things that just need to be tightened up. I'm not going to go into those with you. They're just sort of things that the more technicians, like myself and Katie and Todd in Engineering, we're focusing in on. One thing we're looking at modifying is, more substantive item, is modifying our access requirements for subdivisions and multifamily communities. And right now, we maintain a pretty high standard of requiring second access after 50 lots, which is very, can be very punitive, particularly for, you know, smaller communities or communities that aren't conducive to having a second entrance. And, you know, we don't see that necessarily being needed from a traffic distribution or safety perspective. So we're looking, we asked Stewart to give us a recommendation on increasing the number of lots that could have a single entrance, and even giving some criteria for the Town Engineer and/or the Council to make changes to that. So we may, you know, you may see that change to more like 75 to 100 lots on a single entrance. And so just wanted to kind of, you know, share that with you. And similar with apartment communities, a little different animal. Right now, we use the same standard for subdivisions as we would in apartment community, but they're really different. And so it's not, it's not a good standard to, you know, to apply that single-family standard to an apartment community. So we've asked Stewart to give us some standards that will be more in line with the other communities in the region and what's needed for safety and traffic distribution. Kind of on a more smaller scale, we've, we're going to be seeing some changes related to private driveways, creating some shared driveway allowances for landlocked parcels. There's a lot of older developments in town that, you know, there's lots that don't have frontage on the road, but yet, you know, they need access. And so we're creating some opportunities to, so they could access off shared driveways and really solid, and actually just more put into code what we've been doing as a matter of just interpretation and practice. We've also asked Stewart to help us looking at some of our rural subdivisions. These are, you know, properties that, you know, there may be on Seacrest Shortcut Road, way, you know, way out there, there may be, you know, someone wants to divide up 20 acres into large tracts. And how do we, you know, how do we do that in a way that's fair? And, you know, is it, if someone wants to divide it up into, you know, let's say, four or five large parcels, maybe they're going to give them to their family or what have you. Is it fair to make them build a public road to serve those lots when it's more, you know, it's more of a rural character, kind of a rural subdivision, if you will? Perhaps maybe they could also be shared. Perhaps maybe they could also be shared, they could be served by a shared drive that's maybe not, also not improved with concrete or asphalt, you know, a shared gravel drive. So again, looking at the more of those rural subdivisions, and this is something that every community kind of wrestles with, that is not built out, and has a rural component. One of the things we're looking at too, is with our subdivision standards, is looking at mixing the lot types within a community, a larger community. And so, you know, right now, you could come into Indian Trail, and I mean, it's subject to approval by the council, you could develop a three-hundred lot subdivision, they could all be the same exact lot width, you know, fifty foot wide, sixty foot wide, what have you. So we've asked them to incorporate a provision to kind of vary the lots a little bit, not a ton, but just, just give us a little bit of variation, so it's not just one lot type for an entire subdivision. And that's for subdivisions that are a hundred lots and over. And so we've asked for that variation. Another change in our side is, is to sidewalks, being, creating an allowance for smaller subdivisions that, to allow them to do a sidewalk on one side of the street versus both sides. We think for smaller subdivisions, or perhaps even road segments where the lots are only on one side, we think it's fair just to have a sidewalk on one side. And maybe even it's, maybe it's wider, instead of the standard five-foot wide sidewalk, maybe if you're going to do it on one side, you make it seven feet wide. But it just doesn't make sense to invest the, the money and, and, and the financial investment in loss of land for having two sidewalks, when really the, the community could be equally served with just one. And again, we're talking about smaller subdivisions and, and unique situations. We've also made some changes to our bonding, specifically related to maintenance, maintenance bonds that we get for roads and curb and gutter and other infrastructure, and just responding to state law changes, where they, Raleigh has really tightened up on the ability for the town to have maintenance bonds, and made it a little more, a little more challenging. But these are changes we have to make, it's not, we don't really have a choice in the matter, and so just wanted to share that with you. Any questions before I jump beyond subdivisions? All right. Oh, sorry. And one last thing is the open space. And here's, here is a section that we are actually making some more substantive changes. That is, one, we're trying to, we want to reorganize the section, that, that kind of is a chapter within the division. We just don't like the organization of it, doesn't read well, doesn't flow well, at least based on other ordinances I've worked with, and, and same with Katie and Mead, and so we want to reorganize that. Another feature, and, you know, we've all scratched our head, and we could never figure it out, you know, for open space, we were, if you want to build a subdivision in Indian Trail, you know, there's a minimum amount of open space you have to have for it, and that, that, to determine that acreage, it's one thirty-fifth of an acre for every dwelling unit, and that's how much, you know, acreage you, you need for open space. Can anyone raise your hand, tell me where one thirty-fifth came from? Because, you know, we could, we can't tell you, and when customers ask us, we can't tell them either, and so, we're really not sure. So we want to keep it, going back to that, keeping it simple, we just believe requiring twenty percent of the side area to be open space is a nice, an easy way to calculate, an easy, easy thing, easy figure to understand, and we'll provide a, you know, the appropriate amount of open space needed for a subdivision. So we think that's a, a good change in the system, if you will. We're also going to ask for a percentage of that acreage to be active recreation. You know, again, whether that, maybe that's a trail, maybe that's a sport court, maybe that's a playground, who knows? There's, there's going to be some, you know, variety, but we just want to have at least part of that open space be for active recreation, not just tree save, or something else that's passive. Not that those aren't important, but we just want to have some active recreation. And then that, that would be in scale with the size of the community. We also want to have a requirement, and we think it's needed, is, you know, if there's a, something like a trail or a greenway shown on a master, an adopted master plan, whether it's a town plan, or maybe it's the thread, Carolina Thread Trail, at the very least, we want the, you know, have it in the ordinance where the, the property owner needs to dedicate at least the easement for that, you know? Whether the trail gets constructed with it, well, there's a lot more factors that go into that, you know, but at least that we know that at a bare minimum, the easement will be dedicated to, to ensure that trail or greenway gets constructed in the future. Okay. The next section I want to talk about is special subdivisions, and they are so special, because we've never really had one come through the town since I've been here for the past roughly seven years. It's a section of the subdivision ordinance that doesn't get used very often. It covers three different types, cluster subdivisions, open space subdivisions, and equestrian subdivisions. And, and no, although we have an equestrian subdivision with Montero, it did not get built under this ordinance. I think maybe it inspired this ordinance. But what we've asked, we wanted to just make some housekeeping changes, and, but the biggest change is, you know, that when you look at the cluster subdivision ordinance, that is designed to, you know, you cluster the development into smaller lots, into an area, this, kind of an upland area of the site, and that allows you to create, save more green space on other areas. It's very similar to the open space subdivision requirements, so they're very, they're like, they're almost like brothers or sisters, if you will. So we said, let's, hey, let's make it simpler, take the best of both those ordinances, and combine them into one ordinance. It'll probably just be, we'll probably call it the conserv, the Conservation or Cluster Subdivision Ordinance. And then we've also asked them to make some enhancements to it, to make developers want to use it more frequently. Because again, to my knowledge, I don't think we have a project on the books under any of these ordinances, so we've asked them to get, to help us with that, and they've given us some suggestions that, that makes sense. Okay, the next section is Division 1300, these are general development and design standards. You know, again, beyond housekeeping changes, the first thing we're changing is, we're removing our single-family residential design standards. Again, not because we want to, we think they're a bad idea, the state's told us we have to, and so we just need to kind of completely remove that from our, our ordinance. We do still have the ability to regulate architecture for multifamily, and we found that was an area of our ordinance that was particularly lacking. And so, I don't have the standards to share with you this evening, because I just think they needed some more, you know, TLC, if you will, but we really want to make sure we're getting the highest quality product reasonably possible for Indian Trail. And so we want to see things like material enhancements, working on things like breaking up roof lines, you know, we've all seen apartment complexes and how big they can be, and we think there's, you know, if you've got a pitched roof building, there's an opportunity to break up that, that roof structure, articulation, and, and building offsets, and, and other features like that. So, we think there's definitely an opportunity in our ordinance to improve our multifamily standards, and, and really just develop some, some more concrete standards that we can share with developers, so they have, they know what our expectation is in the community. Similar with industrial standards right now, if you build an industrial building that's not a part of a previous master plan, or, you know, conditional rezoning or such, you have to, you have to meet the commercial design standards. Well, that's a high standard to meet, you know, so, you know, we're, we're of the opinion that, that if I'm going to build a nuts and bolts factory, I shouldn't have to meet the same architectural standard as the Verizon store, you know? So, different, different animals, they're located in different areas, different functionalities, and so we need different standards. And so, we've asked, Stewart's going to be creating some industrial standards for, so again, I don't have, the, the standards that we've received from them are not in a, not in a form that I'm, you know, I want to share at this point, but, you know, we've asked them to look at things like, you know, maybe some, you know, decorative concrete panels, we, I think we've all seen industrial buildings with the tilt-up concrete panels that can be done very well. Again, we'll look at things like breaking up the facade, you know, again, so you don't have, you know, again, we're talking much, much bigger buildings, you know, could be a, you know, four-hundred-foot-long building section, so look at ways to break that up at a high level. Also looking at maybe, but making sure that any office areas that are on the outside, or, you know, visible from the outside, that those are treated like an office-type development, so, you know, glass and higher-grade architectural treatments for the office areas. So, again, we just, the, the premise is, we don't believe industrial buildings should have to meet a commercial standard. We just need to find out what that right standard is and implement it. Again, some minor, you know, we feel our commercial design standards, by and large, are pretty good. A few minor tweaks we're going to make to them, that just, but they don't really represent any kind of substantial change to the system that we have in place. Again, we think generally, you know, that, we haven't heard any complaints on our, our commercial buildings, and we don't think there are, there's too much room to, to change. In terms of the lighting ordinance, kind of a similar philosophy, you know, the lighting ordinance, I think overall, has served the community well, in making sure that the, the right amount of light levels are present on our, particularly our commercial properties, and that, you know, they're able to light their properties to, to display their sites, and keep safety, you know, at a minimum, but that it's not done in a manner that's creating secondary impacts to our neighborhoods or public streets. But again, we are making some little tweaks here and there, that we think there's some opportunities to improve it after, you know, using it for ten years. Same thing with the flood damage and reduction, flood damage reduction ordinance. One, one thing we're doing with this ordinance is we're going to relocate it out of the UDO and put it in the Land Development Regulations Manual, and that's kind of part of an overall philosophy, is to take the various engineering-related standards or ordinances and, and put it into a consolidated central location, and we think that's not only, not only going to help the development and design community, but it's also going to help the, the staff, and, and having a very clear picture of what planning or engineering standards are going to be administered, you know, by, by which departments in the town. So, we, we all, I think we're all in, in agreement on that. We're, and again, for that ordinance, we're just making a little household, or housekeeping type changes. Any questions before I drift? Yes, ma'am.
Will the new developments have the covenants and restrictions, or has there been any change with that?
So, covenants and restrictions, whether that be for a neighborhood, or a business park, what have you, are really a completely private matter, and so they are, I guess in theory, you can look at them as that they're, they are created on a voluntary basis, and so there are no restrictions about, you know, restricted covenants, or other private-type standards. You know, property, you know, property owners can, can subject themselves to those at any time, and the town really doesn't have a role in those.
Question for you, Rox.
Yes, sir.
I've gotten complaints, and, and I tell them it's not us, it's Stallings that allowed this, but the townhouses that were built on Old Monroe Road, the Moser, is it Ryland or Ryan?
Meadow, Meadow Farm Meadows, or Meadow?
Those are Ryan.
Ryan.
It is a Ryan, it is a Ryan Home Community, you're right.
Oh my gosh, yes, those things look terrible. They look terrible. There's a plane, there's this, there's that, you know? And I go, that's not Indian Trail, that's Stallings. Do we have any kind of requirements that make them maybe add a little better architecture? Or, I mean, I know it's difficult to dictate what somebody's going to do with their, their buildings, but...
Sure, so, from a, from a UDO standpoint, again, townhomes generally, you know, when they're built to the single-family residential building code, which I believe those would have been, and, and any other, you know, typical townhome project will be built to, from the UDO standpoint, we don't have a design standard we can hold them to. Again, state, Raleigh said no.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't mean, though, that if a project comes through under conditional zoning, that we can't on a volun, you know, ask them on a voluntary basis to subject themselves to higher standards. And, you know, we've spoken to the developer of that project, there's, and I don't want to, you know, get, get too far off topic, but there could potentially be an expansion of that project that could occur in Indian Trail. And so that's one issue, one area we kind of identified for them is, that if, if such a project were to come to fruition, that, you know, we would want to see a higher architectural standard, and looking at more material variation, you know, more masonry-type materials. And so we kind of threw that, put that to them on a general level, and see what comes back if the project even happens, so. But yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm familiar with the project, I, and I, you know, I've heard similar rumblings, if you will, and, and it is one-hundred percent in the, the town of Stallings.
That's right.
Yeah, but they also have one on, here in Indian Trail, that they'll be starting too, the same Ryan development. That's right on...
Plyler?
No, it's right here on Old Charlotte Highway.
Before, before you get to Rogers.
Yeah.
By Baker Fire, yeah.
I think that's in the unincorporated Union County, if I'm not mistaken, I...
That's across from the old Barnett store.
Yes, yeah, if you're heading to Monroe from here, it'd be on the left-hand side, I believe.
No.
It's on the right-hand side if you're going to Monroe.
It's on the same side of Baker Fire.
They're turning dirt now.
Okay.
It's the Sun Valley Animal Hospital, just down past it on the right. That's the county, or Monroe.
The site they've already started clearing.
Yeah, that's Monroe, yeah.
So, yeah, I'm looking, if he's on the exact location, but I can tell you, that's not in the town of Indian Trail as well, though. But there are, you know, there are several, I think it's, it's actually a good thing to point out, just at a, at a high level, you know, there are several projects that are coming up, whether they are approved, and we'll see them built, or they're going through the, you know, the entitlement or rezoning process in, in Union County, but there are several, you know, projects on our borders, if you will, down Old Monroe, and in, in other areas of town, that, you know, we're, we're starting to see these kind of more suburban-type communities, like townhome communities, and maybe, maybe even apartments, being considered by the, by Union County, which is a, is a new trend. Again, we're getting off topic with UDO, but it, it is a new trend we're seeing over the past couple, you know, couple of years with the county. Before, that was never, you know, that was just not done in, in the county, so I think that's reflective of a trend we're going to, you know, we could, in theory, see more of. Okay. And the last division is 1600, our Use Groups and Definitions. Actually, we had a great opportunity, you saw me reading it, at, during the last case, the definitions. And so, really, one of the things we've asked Stewart to do, and they, they've taken a good solid swing at it, and that's to improve the use descriptions and examples of what uses are in these broad categories, like light industrial, or commercial, or food service, and, and try to just help us, again, get a better, clearer picture of what types of businesses are appropriate within these categories, so it's not quite as, so just to remove any, as much uncertainty as you can, and do it in a, in a, in a better, more organized manner. And so, what they're going to be doing is, you know, we've got, I don't know, four, maybe four different definition sections in our ordinance. Very, it just, I'm sure whoever came up with that system had a good thought behind it, but it just doesn't work well for us, and it doesn't work well for our customers. So we're going to be consolidating that into, you know, one to two definition sections, and we think that's going to create, and it's going to be alphabetized, and so, I think that's going to be a lot easier to find things, it's going to be, create a lot clearer picture of what we mean when we say, you know, use a given term, or use type, or what have you. So, again, more or less like a, a, a housekeeping-type change, but it's a really big housekeeping change, in terms of how much is, how much work is, needs to go into affecting that, so. That is all of the updates I have for you on the UDO. We, you know, we continue to work with Stewart on the draft, you know, the draft changes. Your, our town attorney is, is also going to be taking a role in, in ensuring that we've got the most, you know, effective and efficient ordinance possible. And again, that's not only designed to better serve, you know, our interests, you know, as, as town, you know, the, as representatives of, of the community, but also making sure that we're, you know, being, you know, fair and, and efficient with our, our customers, you know, whether that's a, a developer, like we saw here this evening, or maybe that's a homeowner wanting just to get a deck built on their house, or, or something like that. So, you know, we're all putting the, our minds to trying to craft, you know, the best ordinance possible, and so, we'll continue forward with that. I don't have a schedule for you at present, at present, regarding when it'll, you know, come to the planning board. It could come to the planning board before the end of the year, but I, I don't want to put a date in your mind right now until we get some milestones checked off, and have a clearer picture. But, again, a lot, a lot of time and attention is going into it to craft that, that, that very effective ordinance, so. That's what I have for you, and I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Don't everybody jump at once.
I have no question.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we have a planning report, or does that cover it?
I think that, that generally covers it, other than I'll just mention that, you know, Katie and I had the benefit of going to some training last week in Winston-Salem. It's our, you know, the state North Carolina American Planning Association Conference, held every year in the late summer, early fall. Unfortunately, it was a, it was a great conference, a lot of great discussion topics came out of it. Definitely, it was some, a lot of positives, negatives, it was cut significantly because of good old flow, and so we had to, you know, we had to leave, they, they were closing down the conference, probably lost about a third of the conference because of flow, but that's just what happens. And so, but we, you know, we were able to attend some very valuable sessions. You know, one that was of particular interest that I recall is some new techniques on comprehensive planning and putting together future land use maps, and that's really something after we get the UDO adopted, that maybe a conversation we have, you know, in the future is about updating the comprehensive plan, completely different project, and, you know, that's, that's a big undertaking, but it, it spurred some good ideas. And so, you know, we may come back to you and share some other resources from what, you know, what we, for some sessions that we attended at, at the conference. So we were very fortunate to be able to attend that. And that's it.
Pretty well wrap it up?
Please.
Okay. I'd like to thank our distinguished staff and council for coming tonight, and thank you, the folks who came through for us tonight on the planning board, and I'll see you next month.
Yeah.
We're adjourned.